Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Selectmen's Meeting of February 1st, 2018. If you would like to join me in deciding if we're in meetings.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like a motion, entertain a motion to approve the different expense wire and payroll warrants. To approve the expense warrant from 1/1818 for $132,486.47. Approve the wire warrant for 1/2218 for $18.89. Approve the expense warrant 1/1318 for $10,906.10. Approve the payroll warrant for 1/1318 for $156,177.64. Approve the expense warrant for 1/1318 for $277.61.
Do you have a motion?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
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 Then I would also like a motion to approve this Selectmen's Minutes from 1/2318.
Do you have that motion?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, announcement. Adena Archaeology Project Presentation Public Meeting. Eric Johnson, head of the Archaeology Department of UMass, will present the findings and recommendations from what was called the Camp Brown Project at 6:30 PM on February 13th in the Banquo Hall of the Town Hall. Snow day February 20th. This project confirmed the existence of the Adena connected cultural living on Huabak Pond 3,000 years ago, if no longer. Contact Clarence Snyder at 508-637-1377 if you have any questions. The Board of Selectmen will hold a public meeting on the Town's 2018 Community Development Block Grant Application at 7:00 PM during the February 6th Selectmen's Meeting. Town's residents and other interest stakeholders are encouraged to attend to learn about Brookfield's community development efforts. Does anyone have anything else to say? Well, I have something I'd like to say. I would like to commend our chief, Michael Blanchard. As everyone knows, last Tuesday, at the West Brookfield branch of North Brookfield Savings there was a robbery, and Mike was the first one to respond to that robbery. And I think he should be commended for this, and he's fast and pissed off quick when we're getting over there. I think I'd like something to go in his file saying that.
Absolutely.
Let everybody know how proud he is. He was right there when they knew. Okay. Okay, our first, we have public access. David?
I'd like to speak, yes.
Okay. I hope you make a brief.
Well, I always make a brief.
Well, sometimes you get a little overwhelmed.
Yeah. Why are we having a 90-day review on our town treasurer when she's been employed with us for at least seven months? We're supposed to have a 90-day review after the... Well, let me finish. Let me finish first. Supposed to have a 90-day review when her 90 days are up. Now we're doing it seven months later? Is it off? Whenever? When was she hired? Back in June?
No, she was hired in July.
Okay. All right, so four, five months. So, right, okay, so whatever months. It should've been 90 days, and now we're doing it now on February 1st.
Time just got away from us with the holidays and different things that we had coming up, so we decided to do it now, and the thing about it was that we have to do it 90 days.
Holidays, Linda. She got hired in July, she'd been done back in September.
No, she started in August.
Okay, okay, so it should've been then in October. What's that got to do with the holidays?
It just got away from us.
Actually, it would've been end of month November, which would've been right around Thanksgiving, and to the chair's point.
We scheduled it for January.
It's scheduled for January.
Okay, but my point is, 90 days is 90 days. I don't care if it's Thanksgiving or whenever.
Oh, it's being done today, so.
Okay. And the same thing, this is going back again. You know, you say this financial team is working hard, we're still two years behind, our books don't match up, we don't have Free Cash certified yet, we don't have a special Town Meeting set. I mean, I could go on and on, but you said to make it brief, so I'm gonna make it brief.
Wait, wait, your question blocks me, David, on that. We told you, the books are finishing, getting audited, and 2016 has been certified and now we're ready for 2017. You didn't get the answers.
I understand all that, Linda, but the point I'm trying to make is, you know, you're praising the financial team and they're working hard, but we're still two years behind. We've given these people more hours.
No, we're not two years behind.
Free cash, we have two years of free cash behind. Yes, we are, two years. We've given these people more hours and more pay, $5, $6 an hour increase per pay in their hourly rate, and we're still not getting things done.
They're straightening out problems that were here from years ago, and it's getting straightened out.
Okay, well, I just don't want you to keep reinventing the wheel here. Let's just get the work done.
We're not reinventing any wheel, we're trying to get the work done, and as soon as we have answers, then we will let it known to the Townspeople at a Town Meeting like the Town Accountant did. She sent a letter, brought it, came in with a letter. So we'll let you know as soon as we know.
Okay. Is... I've been up here a few... One more thing, I've been up here a few times. Is the Town Accountant working from her house, or is she doing all the work in-house here?
She works in-house, and some days, say it's a bad snowy day, she works at home.
Doing... Okay, but otherwise, she's here all the time?
She's here all the time.
Okay, all right, okay. Because I've... You've even mentioned it last meeting, that she's been working out of her house periodically.
Well, if it's a snow day, she'll go to her home and say some days she doesn't feel well, she'll work in her house. So the work is getting done.
And especially given the fact that we went to Vadar being the software as a service a couple of years ago.
Okay.
And that's one of the advantages you have when you have software as a service, is that you can actually, if someone isn't feeling well enough, they don't have to come in and play Typhoid Mary, and they can still get the work done.
But the works... We tried this practice before, Linda, with Town Accountants. The work should be done in-house.
Well, progress is being done, because we're seeing the end results of it there.
Okay. I just wish, I hope you three will be, get more diligent and more leadership and more management on what's going on in our town as far as the finances go. That's what I'm asking you. And one other thing, Beth, you guys just approved the snow and ice deficit last meeting.
We did.
You didn't even question it, you just approved it.
So...
Hang on, I'm speaking. You made a... The advisory board, I know, the advisory board does no longer have to approve it because they passed that state law a year ago, whatever. So they don't have to really review it. You know, that's what you thought, Beth. But they did pass, you know, they did pass that, so the advisory board doesn't even have to weigh in on it now. So, but someone should be doing a check and balance on something, on our finances.
The late Town Accountant did, because we talked to her about it.
Now, on a side note, and I didn't bring it up at the meeting, previous standard practice, when they requested those extensions, was to provide the... And you're right, I wasn't aware of the fact that they changed the state law, because I actually directed them to take it, or recommended it to the Board, and they take it back.
Right.
Okay. What I had also asked the Highway to do, which was the standard practice, was to send a copy of their internal spreadsheet that shows why they're asking for that extension at the same time as the request. I don't know if they forwarded it to the Selectmen's Office, but they copied me when they sent it to Steve Gillis.
No, but we did get a copy of the balance, that's what she...
Right, right. And her balance agrees with the accountant's balance, okay? So, we had gotten the high-level number, I had asked for the detail, and that detail was sent to the advisory board so that they would be aware of what areas that funding was set. So there was due diligence, it just maybe wasn't as transparent as it could've been.
The advisory board hasn't met in almost two months?
So I can't speak to that. I do know they have a meeting scheduled tonight.
I'm just concerned by the way we're running our finances up here. You say we're all working hard, but I just want to see some good results, is what I'm asking.
So, well, I understand that. So what I'm saying is that, while it may not have been intuitively obvious from that meeting, in the background, there was some accountabilities in place regarding why that request was going forward and where the money has gone. So, just because it didn't come across that way, now we're communicating.
Not only the money, Beth, but it should be, why are we in that deficit? Why are we having this much, why are we having this much money spent for the snow and ice?
Well, that's what you get, that's what you get from the details that show the materials, the repairs, and the work, but I don't want to extend this, so we'll move on.
All right. Thank you, Linda.
All right. Okay, I'm next on the line. The one here is from James Sniffin. His request for minutes. Do you want to come up, James?
I could beat up everybody on Thursday, then, huh?
Indeed.
Indeed. Okay. So... Everybody is aware of my Town Government website, right? We see all the minutes, I mean, all the meetings. Okay, so, a while ago, I went on there and I wanted to check and see what the minutes were for public access. So I noticed that there were some meetings that were held, but I couldn't read the minutes. So I said, "Okay, well, I'll just email Sharon and say, you know, can I have a copy of the minutes?" That's all. I copied all of you from the beginning, so all of you know what's going on. Correct? That sound correct to everybody?
Yes.
Okay. So I emailed Sharon. December 11th of 17. I let a couple weeks go by. Everybody's busy, I get that, I'm busy too, so not a big deal. But no response. December 24th of 17, I sent another email, same email, just saying, "Second request." Now, by this time, I had a conversation with Clarence on the phone about another issue, and we just happened to talk about that. So Clarence said, you know, he talked to Sharon about that, which he did, because he called me the following day, it might've been the following day or the day after, and said, "Hey, you know, I had a chance." Okay, good. Not a problem. Time still went on. A third request went out on January 9th of 18, 2018. Still nothing. Here we are at the fourth time requesting minutes. Okay? I'm sure everybody's aware of the open meeting law. We all know what that is. Do we also know that the law requires the existing minutes be made available to the public within 10 days of a request? We're now in the 51st day. Okay? Again, I understand we're all busy. The meetings were held, so we have the minutes. In the email, if you all remember, because you all copied, that they could be attached to an email, they could be sent to my house in the regular post office, or if it was easier for her or whoever on the Board to drop my house, that's fine too. No big deal. But it's 10 days after a request, not 51. 3:49 this morning, I get an email from Sharon. I got all the minutes. But at 3:49 this morning, there was a lot of slot that went into this email. Which is okay. Gives me a little bit of an update, what's going on, because I'm very concerned, what's going on and what's not going on. This is okay. Now I got the minutes, I've already reviewed the minutes already, I gotta review a couple more, which is fine. However, I should've got this in December, not 51 days later.
So, just a quick question on open meeting law, is it 10 working days?
It does not say that, it says 10 days of request. Whether they have been approved or remain in a draft form, it doesn't matter. Doesn't say business day, it says only 10 days. I also blame the Board, because you all knew from the beginning. So you all knew, you all could've said, "Hey, by the way, did you do that?" Now, this isn't just because it's me, this can be anybody in town for any meeting. Anybody can request copies of the meeting, or whatever, if it's been held. And there's minutes. So I get, I'm concerned, like I said, because... You could make a big deal that this is violating the meeting law. I really don't care about that, I'm just making that as a statement, because it should be 10 days.
Well, I won't be aware, we have the Public Records Officer now, and if you hadn't occurred, you should've notified probably the Public Records Officer, and she could've put that in.
Right, though probably the communication opportunity for us would've been to redirect him to the Public Records Officer.
Yeah, that's what we should've done.
And I know that I made one inquiry as well about the status of this in that timeframe, and I didn't necessarily communicate back to you the fact that I had made the inquiry to, and said that, yes, indeed, the minutes are moving along and it's getting put into a final format versus being chicken scratch. So, so you're right, there was some missed opportunity of communication.
The only communication I got was from Clarence, and like I said, I happened to call Clarence on something else, and we just happened to talk about it.
Right, because I followed up after your January 9th email, and kind of included some input on, "Don't sweat the format so much, just make sure that the notes go out."
Correct, and that's what the open meeting law says, whether approved or in draft form, it doesn't really matter.
So if this happens another time, you should probably go to the Public Records Officer. And it's a 10-day request, and what she will do is, I mean, she has to charge you for the copies.
That's fine.
And also how long it takes her to get these, and it's the lowest paid, of course, inherent building.
Regardless if it was the lowest paid or the highest paid, that does not matter, that's immaterial.
But I'm just letting you know the process, if you have to do this.
What it has to do, it has to go by the open meeting law, which says 10 days. If there's a process, that's fine. Like I said, everybody's busy, offices are busy, that's fine.
I think one of the things we need to do, and we need to concede that, as a town, this is something that has been a challenge for us. I don't remember when, back in like August, when you had been out for a while, weren't we behind even with Selectmen's Meeting Minutes publication by like close to three months? Okay? Not making an excuse, but that's right. What I'm saying is that it's something that holistically we're starting to work on, we've been starting at the top, now we're approving minutes at the Selectmen's Meeting and setting a good example for the other boards and committees by getting ours published now, a week later, and have it be the fully published minutes. Okay? Now that we're actually in better compliance, I think we're in a position to start to ask all of the committees to get better at publishing the minutes to the website. So here's what I want to propose.
And that's good, and hopefully everybody will follow suit.
Right, so I did the first thing that needs to happen, is we have the most support of anybody. All the other committees in town are run by volunteers, and we all know. I had this conversation with a young lady down at the transfer station who was with the Girl Scouts the other week. And, you know, the people who get involved in stuff are the people who are involved in everything. So the people who are at least trying to support the town generally are the folks that are the most time constrained, yet they're doing that anyway. Okay? So I think, so the piece that I'm just saying is that, let's get a communication out, my recommendation to the Board would be, let's get a communication out to all the chairs about, "Hey, reminder about open meeting law, reminder about if the minutes aren't in an approved format, that they at least need to be available in a draft format," so that in the future, regardless of the committee, if this type of request goes forward, that they'll understand to at least, you know, scan your agenda with your handwritten notes and send it. That's all you got, that's all you got, but respond to it.
And if the town has a public information officer, that's good. They don't have to be, at least it's my opinion, I mean, if you can't get an upline to my Town Government, as long as it's somebody has access to it.
Access to it.
It's like I said, this is just me, can you just imagine if somebody else is wanting to do the same thing for any other kind of meeting?
Right.
And you're gonna have them here? To be honest with you, I didn't want to come this far. I'm willing to go even further, but I got what I requested for. Not near a lot of time, but I got what I requested for. But I should've got it sooner.
Get it, so.
Okay. Mr. Sire.
So I think, important that we understand, and in fact, Beth's suggestion is a good one, as far as reminding people of timeliness and the like. But I guess I get back to our conversation, when we did have that conversation, and I think it's important, and we're on camera, and the Towns hopefully watching, that in fact, the real root cause is time, volunteer time.
I get that.
And I appreciate that. What I, I'm not necessarily speaking to you at the moment, through the chair, to those folks on the camera that are watching this thing, that in fact, we need additional resources. We are short-staffed in the area that you came to ask questions about. Fortunately, we do have, we do have the information that you were looking for, that's great. Again, timeliness an issue, but again, it comes to people's time. And I think that it really involves us to ask of the town for support for this committee as well as others that are short-staffed.
There's only three of them down there.
I know, I was just gonna say that. I know it's only...
We're heading out on meetings, you know, we'd like some more people to help out.
I understand that. I've been there, so I understand that part. My biggest concern is that there was no response. So now I have to start to think, okay, so, these four meetings, not including the fifth, but if you want to go with these four meetings now, are they following the open meeting law? Are they discussing things that shouldn't be discussed outside? I still have to kind of think that the last meeting was in June of, I'm sorry, June of 27 of 17, that's eight months from then till now, so I have to, now I have to, really have to think, well, jeez, there's been no meetings, but there still has to be discussion. So now I have to again think, are we still violating the open meeting law to a point?
That's not necessarily a concern if there's been no policy discussions related.
That we know of, we don't know that. But there has to be some kind of discussion going on here, like Sharon says, "I'll do this meeting," Danielle says, "I'll take care of this," Kevin says, "I'll do this." So there is, there is a discussion going on. Whether it violates the meeting law, I don't know, that could be another debate.
Yeah.
But I'm not going down that road right now, because I got what I wanted.
Okay.
Or actually, what I requested.
Right.
So, we're okay. But this is something I think about. Like I said, I want to know what's going on, I also want to know what's not going on. People talk to me, and what can I say?
I will understand what you're saying.
And you all know I'm in law enforcement now, so I have to have an open mind. It's tough sometimes, I have to hear both sides. And that's what I'm trying to do too.
Right.
That's all. So like I said, you know, people talk to me, yeah, okay. But I got what I wanted, so, actually, I got my questions, sorry, keep wording it that way. But I'm okay with that, it's just the length of time that has taken to get this.
And through the chair, I'll go back to Clarence's point, which is, most of the people that we have involved right now are very time-limited, so, in fact, one of these... I had wanted to bring up, and we can bring it up under others, is just talking about a couple of citizens who've come to me with some ideas on how to get more people involved and engaged, and I wanted to bring those to the Board.
And that's okay, but we can't be using volunteerism as an excuse all the time. It only, it only takes five minutes, "I can't get to the meeting minutes right now, give me a couple of days," something like that.
Understood, like I said, the communication could've been better, I'm not, I didn't say that.
10 minutes of four this morning, that's, she took a lot of slot into that, and I know Sharon, she writes emails like this, because when, you know, when I was on cable access, her and I, emails are like this.
Okay.
And that's okay. I just don't want to say what you just said is, "They're short-staffed, this committee's short-staffed."
Right.
We can't be, you can't be playing that card all the time.
I understand what you're saying, but like I said, the first step is, like you said, and like I said, I missed an opportunity, because I had followed up on it and probably had more information than you about when you could expect it, and I didn't share it, because I missed bringing it up at the last Selectmen's Meeting, and we try not to operate too terribly independently with some of the communications back related to complaints, okay? Or questions.
Mm-hmm.
All right. So, missed opportunity on my part, I'll raise my hand and say that. And I guess all I'm asking is that, first, understand we're taking it, or at least I'm taking very seriously what you're saying, right? The first step is, we've cleaned up our own house in-house with the Board of Selectmen and getting more timely with the minutes. So now, let's give us some opportunity to communicate that that's the standard for the town, is what I'm asking.
That's fine. That's, like I say, hopefully, other committees will follow suit, and that'd be fine, you know? So, that's all I wanted to say. I'm glad it didn't go any further. Now we'll just continue on, and we'll see how it goes.
Well, thank you for your persistence, and Sharon, do you have anything to say on that?
No.
No? Okay. All right, thank you for coming up.
No problem. Now you go to bed.
Oh, you had third shift?
Yeah, I worked third shift.
Okay, now we have...
I did that for a few years. No, but we have the written communication from him, so we could cover his topic.
Yeah, I had a...
And we also had a separate communication as well.
I had a chance to chat with him, come to about his concerns.
Yeah, I chatted with him too, the other day.
Great.
Well, he had talked to me, one of the, one of the big concerns that he has is that some different people aren't going to attending the meetings.
Right, I know, I've only been making it about 50%.
And this is, you know, this is what he's very concerned about.
Right.
All the time, and so I told him that I would talk to the different ones that aren't, you know, making the meetings. And he just wants to know, another concern he has is expenditures for the next five years, and he'd like to have that before May 1st.
Well, right, I think one of his concerns actually was that, according to our bylaw, the Capital Improvement Planning Committee owes a capital plan to the town in the month of February. So what he's asking for, because we got a little bit of a late start, because we had to reform the CIPC, and because we have had, you know, attendance issues and some snow days, and then some of the information came back, but it came back really pretty late, it came back like late January, is to just ask that we vote to extend to May 1st that deadline for the capital plan, because that way they feel they can have something fully formed together. And yet, that should be plenty of time, presuming we do our annual Town Meeting in June, to not just present the Capital Improvement Plan to the Select Board and perhaps through a separate public meeting, but also have it available for them to brief at the annual Town Meeting, so.
And then the other day, when I also met with him, Carrie came in, and he wanted to know here, the second question, the anticipated completion of the town's financial reconciliations, and Carrie explained that to him, and she understands much better what's going on there.
Good. Because I had given him the same explanation I'd gotten from Carrie, but I think getting it from the horse's mouth was probably...
Yeah, she came in.
Was probably good.
So I had actually recommended May 1st, and for, because the practicality of this thing is that the information's not necessarily required much before May.
Right.
Whether February's correct or not, we don't have all the information in February, just like we don't have information for Town Meeting, that's why Town Meeting's now moved to June.
Right.
So that I had suggested, again, an April-May timing, I'm glad to see the May 1st timing. I think the other piece was that I think we should come away from today to support the committee as far as receiving the wants and needs, that in fact, the asset, there's a couple of holes in the asset report. I think, Madam Chair, if you would express to the different departments their need to fulfill the asset listing, to make sure that it's clear. And then the second piece to that is that, if there are capital wants and needs of the departments, that those departments provide that to the capital committee, such that they have, one, the inventory in hand, and then, two, and again, I would think the inventory in hand isn't changed very much from last year to this year, so it can't be that much to be able to say what that inventory is. And then the second piece to that is that, in fact, if there are capital wants and needs over the next five years, that the department heads provide... over the next five years, that the department heads provide that information in as timely a manner as possible.
Yeah, that's something I had discussed with you the other day, and he said he wanted the wish lists from the different partners. And we discussed that, and I thought, you know, I thought he would be in here this morning too.
A lot of it has come in-
Yeah.
In pieces because, and even since some of these conversations, because I know I saw some traffic to the full, some, some traffic, because they'll, they'll send out, as we get data, they'll send it out to the committee members, but we won't discuss it until the actual meeting. And I know that different portions and different departments have come back and we have some of that information for homework for the February meeting. So I think there is some traction in that information coming, but to Kermit's point and as, we as a Board of Selectmen haven't necessarily talked about some of the higher level ones that we might have, because I know we're having some struggles with our ancient phone system. I know that the CIPC had asked me about finding out if Larry could at least provide a recommended IT upgrade plan, so that we could have a little bit of a roadmap instead of just replacing stuff as we go or as it fails. There's a number of times when I walk through the office where people complain about the capabilities of the computer systems that they have right now. And just to get a feel for what he feels as our IT professional, what ought to get replaced over the next five years and what, what might not. And if I recall, in the contract with him, though I know that we didn't fully fund the contract for this year, part of that, of the level of service described in this contract is to kind of provide recommendations about how to replace it.
What he has been doing, because I know that there was a suggestion by someone on the CPIA committee. They wanted to go out and spend a hundred thousand and buy all new computers, and you know, where's this money going to come from? So what Larry's been trying to do, every time somebody has a problem, he, if the high drives go, he's able to get some other ones and replace them. He's doing the best that he can and he's trying to save the town some money on that.
Well, I'm not saying that he's not. What I'm saying is that I think that the, I think we just need a discussion around the approach, that we may have, have been too aggressively frugal in, in some instances. And honestly, I already voiced my opinion on the replace everything tomorrow suggestion that came out there in the CIPC. But, which is that we're not necessarily in a position to do that, and it's not that critical. But somewhere in the middle between those two approaches is probably what will get the townspeople the best service for their money. And I think that's really the question, is we've been limping along, doing as little as possible for a while. We've done some replacements in the past, okay? In a perfect world, we'd replace everything and get the newest, the best and the brightest. The reality for the town is something on the spectrum between the two, and we would just like his input about what's smart. You know what I'm saying? From a, from a committee's standpoint. That's, that's really the discussion.
And like you're saying, we did get, we did get computers in a grant, but all these were, they were referred as computers, and not, they weren't new computers, because he was led to believe they were.
Right. So now that, now those even are probably three to five years old from when they were refurbished. So we just, and that's the whole point of this committee, is to look at what are the needs and wants, to use your term.
Oh, I understand that.
And then we know we're not going to be able to fund it all, but what makes sense to fund? So, so I think that's the support they're looking for from us.
So-
Go ahead.
Madam Chair, through, item three, I think is important to consider as to, again, these meetings can be offline, they don't have to be, we do not have to be party to them. But there's some certain, certainly things that need to be considered. Again, the whole idea of this idea of develop a position to go out for grants and the like. There are grant monies that are available. As a lady yesterday, I received another request related to what we might be able to do for the campground. We'll have a meeting on the 13th, we'll decide what, what possibly we'll do with that. Through the month of February and into March, we'll have this open space and rec plan development. Again, the good news is that the assembly of that document will not be paid for by the town. The town has a grant, or will receive a grant to complete the work. We've had free service up to this point to gather that information. There are many of these things that are out there and available to the town. And again, his, Kermit's suggestion to meet with Mr. Arson is a good one as it relates to potential funding sources. Again, we're not leveraging our debt. I mean, we don't have, essentially don't have debt.
We don't have a lot of debt.
We've done an excellent job, if we look at the police station as an example, an excellent job in how to fund that. At the same time, I think we need to explore further what, what that service is, what's appropriate for the town and to go forward. I'd even go back to the Preservation Act. Again, we chose not to do that as a town years ago. I think we need to reconsider that, especially as it relates to where our tax rate is now going forward, as to whether or not there's room to be able to do that, because if there's that work to be done, those are matching funds that we could, we could go after.
But the past few years, though, I don't think it's been like 100% reimbursement.
Oh, I, all I'm saying is reimbursement means that the town isn't providing those dollars. I'd go back to the three houses that we're now still waiting from the town's attorney to tell us that we can in fact tear those three places down. The town's going to pay for that in total, 100%. Yet we had, we, again, the town decided, and again, that's a decision to decide, but we did not take advantage of the Attorney General's abandoned housing initiative, so therefore we will pay 100% for the removal.
The Board of Health didn't want-
That was a decision that was made, I think we need to revisit it. And again, I would then look to the Capital Committee for recommendations to the Board of Selectmen and further to the town as to what the appropriateness is of obtaining funding outside of the town's resources. Thank you.
Okay. If we're all settled, we want to move on.
Yep.
For the next one. It's, the next one is the 90-day review, we call it. Okay, we're ready for you guys.
So did you want to make a motion to extend that deadline to May 1st? Do you want me to make a motion?
Oh, yeah, I'll make the, I'll make the motion to accept the recommendation of this Capital Improvement Committee to move their report to May 1st.
Okay.
What are you calling that report, by the way? Capital Improvement Plan. Okay.
Can I make a comment?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hello.
Okay, good morning. Have a seat.
Sure.
Have a seat. Thank you. And this is why we realize we're a little late with our 90-day review, so we want to get it done. And maybe before we start, I have a letter here to the Arnold for Board of Selectmen. This letter is to support Lanny Crash-
Crasha.
Crasha. And commend her for her progress in her position as Town Treasurer. In many interactions with Lanny, I have found her should be always helpful, conscientious, and a team player, who goes the extra mile to get the job done. Several employees and residents have remarked on how Lanny's excellent communication skills and willingness to aid the public. She's always as eager to tackle the challenges that come her way and is a pleasure to work with. I look forward to working with her for many more years. Sincerely, Michael Pissery, Town.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. We want to start some questioning and helping with Danielle. One of the first things, I got a few questions too. One of the first things I'd like to ask Lanny is, how did you feel about being appointed as the Treasurer as you began your work, and as you began your work as officially the treasurer?
Very exciting, actually. I, it's a very challenging position in department, and I'm so up for this challenge. It's, when I was appointed, I was in tears because just so happy about it and kind of proud of myself and thankful that you all have a little bit of faith in me for this
Okay, we want to start off with some other questions.
If I could?
Let's say.
Back to the, with some formal training that was going to be conducted.
Yeah, formal training, yeah.
Formal training. So where are we with the formal training?
Okay, so I've already taken one section of the Treasurer Collector's class, which happens once a year.
Yep.
I have been to Worcester Retirement for a class. I am actually, at the MMA last weekend, or the weekend before, rather, I was in touch with the Vadar system, because they had a booth set up there. So I spoke with Frank and Ted and discussed with them that I would like them to come in, because with the whole Vadar system, even though the financial team works as a group with it, there are certain requirements that the Treasurer's position has to enter the information. And they're going to come in and hopefully we're going to actually all get together as a whole financial team group. And then what'll happen is, is it'll be like a couple hours spent with the Treasurer, with the accountant, and then Brendan, so on and so forth. And then as a whole group, we'll be able to kind of get a gist of what each department does. But Vadar's going very smoothly for the sections that I enter right now and deal with.
What sections are those?
That is entering turnovers and running reports off of them. So the deposits that we go to the bank, they then in turn get put into the system and then submitted to accounting.
Now, is, is the submission to accounting occurring within the Vadar system, or is that one of the things that you feel needs to get worked out with Vadar as to how to get the, the electronic transfers or the electronic record alignments more clear?
Well, here's the thing with that, right? It's getting submitted to the accountant. It's getting submitted the way that it was taught to me on how the accountant's way it should be done. But in speaking with Vadar, this is where I'm talking about how there is a specific way that the Treasurer's end of it actually gets entered a little different. So that's what Ted and Frank and myself will be working on.
I think back in October, November, we as a, as a, as a board voted to go ahead and authorize them to fund with, from within their department expenses to bring in Vadar for a day. So you're saying now that that is going to get scheduled?
Yes, actually Ted and I were on the email together yesterday, as he's going to call me sometime this afternoon.
So we discussed that, I had discussed that with him the other day.
Okay, great.
So to come back to the formal, so we've done a bunch of formal stuff. Is there formal stuff in front of you that needs to be done?
What do you mean by that?
Additional classes, certifications?
Oh, I think anytime that any of the agencies that I deal with has a class or seminar, I think I would leave myself as well as the town that I attend to. Just a constant learning and any items that might change or, so right now, there's no classes coming up presently.
Okay.
Are you currently on the Department of Revenue mailing list for the local services so that you, you get some of the real-time updates of information? Are you familiar with what I'm talking about?
I'm sure she is, because we are.
Should be. I know I get them at home.
Okay.
I'm sure she is, because we get them.
Yeah, let's, let's double check that they're coming to you.
Keith, do you have some different things that you'd like to add?
I've got a couple of things. I do want to say I'm happy to hear that the Board of Selectmen is supportive of personnel going to train, because the Board of Successful Organizations do have well-trained personnel. On the flip side, those that don't encourage it have to.
I recommend all kinds of education she can get in, you know, whatever she can. Also with networking with other Treasurers, she can learn just as more, you know, just as much. And you know, she has a problem, she can call one of the neighboring Treasurers and they'll help her out.
That's good. The Vadar system is a pretty decent software system and it's well-integrated here. I think the training will help to refine everybody's skills.
One thing that I would ask when you have Vadar on-site is that, you know, it, part of it is training, but sometimes they actually have to change stuff up structurally in, in order to get the different portions of Vadar to talk to one another. Let's make certain that based on how we want to do business as a town, that while they're on-site, they identify any of those areas where there may be an opportunity to, to create, sometimes in software, it's referred to as a workflow, where they can set up automated workflows to make sure that, that the right portions of each record gets to the right departments. Because a lot of people don't take the time upfront when they get systems like this to, to set those up in a way that actually works for the process.
A lot of people go as far as what they can do to get their particular task accomplished and they don't do the best.
And that's it.
One of the things I've spent doing over the past six, eight weeks is refining the tax type. Vadar has a module in there and there's no reason why it shouldn't be used. Former Treasurer had started the process, but then it got dropped and it was a challenge trying to pull all the information from wherever. Excel spreadsheets and records and what's your-
Emails, probably.
And what was recorded, the registry deed and stuff. So I think at this point in time, we're almost 100% accurate. And the, the other thing that we did that, that was what you just mentioned, is now the tax collector can transfer all the subsequent year tru- right into the system.
Okay.
And have worked with Vadar to make sure we got the correct stuff. I can give you quantities.
That would be fabulous.
Yeah.
Because I know that, I know that that's been a question that's been asked from multiple sources, including CIPC has been asking for some visibility on what, what we have out there.
Thank you.
Of course, if you look at the lower right-hand corner, if you could collect, oh, we don't have total, but it's-
I think I have the urge. Oh, okay.
So if you look in the lower right-hand corner, that's the actual total amount if everybody pays. It's not going to happen.
It's not going to happen.
In fact, if you also look at right-hand column, it says F O R E, which is just a shortened, a foreclosure.
Sure.
So those are the cases that are currently in Land Court. So if you look down at the bottom, almost in the middle there, there's more in foreclosure, principal in foreclosure than there are actually outstanding. One of our tasks over the next month is to start sending dunning letters out to people, finding out what their intent is, and then perhaps we can refer some of these cases to the town's attorney and continue the process. I think it's a mistake to let the cases get too old before you start the foreclosure, because people disappear and that's a little challenging. But I think overall, you're not as too bad a shape here. The second from the top line, there's a person who's been on a payment plan, so they're almost going for that. We also, with friends as well, we found a couple of old cases that I'm sure have been put in the archives in Land Court Boston, and they need to be revised.
And actually, Karen, can you double check in your email? Because I think KP at one point sent us a list of what we had in Land Court and I'm sure, do you have that list?
Yes, I do.
Okay. So you're saying there are ones that aren't on that list and aren't-
Before KP was engaged, there was another town attorney.
Ooh, that's old.
Yeah, it goes back a lot.
That's got to go back 10 or 12 years.
Maybe even longer than that.
Yeah.
So those are actual cases that they don't find, that would be actually revised.
So again, what we learned in the last three, the transaction of the three houses that we were looking to tear down, we learned that 30 days is not 30 days, that we started the process in September and we're now February 1st, and we still haven't had legal approval to move forward. So I think that going back with the town attorney, and again, Madam Chair, to strengthen the board's resolve as it relates to the town's attorney and their processing, if you find that they're not processing or the timeliness is not there, I think you need to make sure that we know, so that we can in fact push. Because again, to have the numbers of things on that list from the original list- Because again, to have the numbers of things on that list from the original list that they provided us to now see this list, it says you got a lot of work ahead of you. And as a lot of work, on the flip side, we may not be able to collect what's on the lower right, but we can bite into this thing to have some additional resources.
And at some point in time in the future, you can take a look. One of the other things to do is to create this internal properties that came through the foreclosure process. And then this board can decide whether they are of sufficient value to hold it actually and try to recoup some of the... There's a property here that has 21 issues.
That was the question I was gonna ask you, is what is 21A?
Petroleum.
Okay, yeah. The brown field.
Well, and to recognize that that is part of the CBGG initiative that's going on right now.
That's specifically part of that recent grant approval was to get a plan together because it's the, we've got a plan funded to draft something to remediate. It's not actual funding of the remediation though, correct?
No.
It's just to develop the plan for remediation.
Specific to that, if you look back a year ago, we looked at this list, there were three properties that were the highest priorities, this being that property being one of those properties. There wasn't much that we could do. We initiated an effort with mass development as far as available dollars to take for cleanup. What it needed to be done was that there were two reports. One report suggested that there was something of $40,000 worth of additional cleanup that would be needed. We've learned now later that there in fact, and that's why we're now moving on the CBGG thing, is that in fact, there may be no cost to moving forward for the completion of the cleanup other than pay for it. At the same time, there was a report that's hung out there that talked, that was in the matter of hundreds of thousands of dollars to clean up. And that, yet, because of the CBGG work, we will in fact be able to learn whether it's zero, $4,000 or $400,000. But at least we'll be able to do that so that this particular property could come off the rolls and be repurposed. The second property that was on this list as far as the numbers of dollars was in fact the campground property on February 3rd. While there's one property left, the town attorneys still haven't followed through. It's been now years. And so that, as we look to the campground, we have to, we'll have this meeting on the 13th as far as the next thing that we might be able to do with it. But again, now we've learned that it's in fact a cemetery and a very old cemetery. And so the chance of the town ever repurposing that is probably still in one none. And again, we need to agree to agree that that's the reality and that the townspeople agree, but it may be a dog park. And so again, unfortunately, as you suggested, we would not be able to collect everything at the bottom. That particular property, we will not be able to. It would be my thought as I move forward in this role, is to work with you in whatever manner I can work to take the next three and figure out who they are and figure it out and let's get going.
Yeah.
Because if it's been September to now to get rid of three buildings, maybe we can take the next ones and it won't take us that kind of time. The result. Thank you. This is excellent. Yeah, I know. As I've been looking it over, I know Long Beach has been in, like you say, tax title many, many years. Yep.
So the good thing about having this up to date is now as payments come in, Lonnie can enter them into this and then creates a report and then that's what's put on the turnover for depositing. So we're trying to get the system to have all the information in it.
And then that way, when the question comes in of what's our status, it's easier. Do you know if there's any way, because I appreciate the notes that you all provided as well with regards to that, but is there any way to talk to Vadar about allowing a comment field or if there's something built into the system for the reporting to where we could actually incorporate that more formally and save you all the...
Yes, there is.
Great.
This is a sample of an individual account that's on the list. It shows at the top, the years that were certified in tax title. And then this person made 32 payments over the past two years.
Great.
Well, that's the reason the tax rate has in fact gone down.
A piece of it.
A piece of it.
A piece of it.
Do we wanna move on to different things like with the bank? Banking is concerned, having to have gone to, you closed out a lot of the accounts because I know there was, how many accounts when you first came on?
There's still a fair number of accounts, but they've been commen... I'm sorry, consolidated. So Unibank is the primary account that Lonnie works with. When you talk about internal transfers, it's easy to fund a warrant bill.
Correct, because when you take money from the general fund account, you're only allowed federally to take, transfer money out of it a certain amount of times per month. And with the flow of warrants being processed twice a week, that reaches the over limit. So what we did was we set up another account called internally our transfer account, if you will. So we're able to take X amount of dollars from the general fund and put it into this
Transfer account.
Transfer account. And then we can split it out between vendor or payroll or what have you. So it's streamlining the process better.
Now, does that align with like the US guidelines from the state as well? So, okay.
The good thing about Unibank is they tune into municipalities and they actually watch our accounts. So if you get something strange, someone tries to present, we'll just check. They're the first thing that they find.
And they're available all the time amongst all the other agencies that I've reached out to. They're very, very helpful and very for the town, so.
So I have a question going forward. Budget for the next fiscal year for the services that you're providing. So you've budgeted for yourself, obviously, but now back to the support and the continuing support. I look forward to having that continuing support. Is that going to be in the budget for the next year?
I would like to put it in the budget, yes.
I thought this was gonna be a 90-day appointment.
Yeah.
But that's okay. If I can, if I'm of use and helpful, yes.
You have... I look at this list and chipping away at this list means the taxpayer's not gonna have to pony up, that taxpayer that's been able to be on time is not gonna have to pony up for this. And so that work is huge.
I do have a question around though, like all of the like married accounts and the account consolidation. My understanding is we're just about, we're getting close to the point where we can get back into a cycle of regular reconciliation with the accounts. My one concern in, and I've seen it with a couple of iterations of new treasurers, is that some of the accounts and all these little accounts that are everywhere were created based off of like votes and revolving accounts and stuff that tracks back years.
You're talking about the accountant's accounts?
Uh, well, no, it's kind of like the inter... I'm talking about like the interaction between the accountant's accounts and the treasurer's accounts. So one of the reasons why we have like, or had at one point, I remember at one point we had like 21 different accounts and I don't know if we're down, I'm hoping we're down from that at least, but is that...
Are you talking bank accounts? Physical bank accounts?
I'm talking about kind of both.
Well, no, are you talking like 21 bank accounts where money's going into, or are you talking about the accounts on like the warrant?
No, I'm talking about the, both the individual bank accounts, like where money goes in.
Yep.
Okay. And then the accounting lines related to some of the items that are not necessarily operational budget lines, but prior year, like in some instances, certain accounts like the cemetery fund or other revolving accounts, like some of them are linked to those revolving accounts. And I think at times in the past, that when they had like a project account, they actually set up a whole separate bank account to receive that. And I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to understand that as we're doing this account consolidation, that the communication has been clear and we've been reconciling both those virtual accounting accounts to anything that might even link to it physically.
There are still a few bank accounts set up with minimal amount of money. As an example, there's one that's labeled with rent account, I think it has $2,500.
Right, probably related to like fire or police or something.
And there's probably no need to have a separate account. That's one that probably would have to be reviewed with accountant first.
Right, and we'd have to figure out...
That could just go to the general fund because she's accounting for it separately.
Yep.
And there's no need for, and at this point in time, it may just be a general fund account.
Right, that actually all of those funds have been allocated and closed out to grant. And I guess that's what my point is, is at what point are, do we think we're gonna be able to do that level account reconciliation between the treasurer and the accountant to try to clean it up, not just in the physical world of the bank accounts, but also from the standpoint of the accountant?
We had a financial team meeting a couple of weeks ago, and I said four weeks, but it may go beyond.
But is it four weeks to start the process and then, or you think four weeks to get the actual reconciliation process done? Okay. So say four to six weeks, to give you some buffer?
Yeah, I need a little buffer.
Is that, is that fair?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
The tax title took a little longer than I thought as well.
Everything takes a little longer than all of us think it will, so, you know, I'm willing to accept that so long as there's at least a plan and a schedule that I understand what the goal is.
There is another account that's labeled cultural council. There's no reason why that particular account can't be in with our trust funds.
Okay.
So at some point in time...
So long as they never voted to do what REC did, which I think REC has an offline account that they established a couple of years ago that's separate of the town funding, so.
That's fine. If we move it into the trust funds, we'll have it so long.
And that's great. Yep.
It's just, again, control of the internal point.
Yep, absolutely. So, great. So, go ahead. I'm sorry, I don't wanna...
So, what are some of the important goals that you feel for this upcoming year that you want to do?
So, the payroll system. Due to requiring, reporting requirements to certain state agencies, a lot of, in the payroll system, certain screens, if you will, under each employee need to be updated or certain information needs to be added. There's a lot of information that comes from our payroll system that gets exported out into like Mass Teachers Retirement. So with going through all of this, I'm finding that a lot of things weren't entered or part of it was entered, the rest of it wasn't. So I'm working with Mass Teachers Retirement on that, I'm working with payroll on that. So we're gonna try and get that to be a little more streamlined and unfortunately, starting from the bottom up in one aspect with data entry and information required, but we'll get there.
Is that something, given state entry, is that something that you could have someone in for a short period of time that would be familiar with that?
Probably not, because, only because it depends on the state agency, like where your retirement's going, so.
Understood. I know you wanna be careful, but I...
Exactly.
I saw on some of the, some notes with regards to labor timekeeping, it sounds like Harper's might have a tool that we could open up to the, is that something that could be opened up to the department heads to have them enter their time directly? Or is that something that just we print out a form for them in the format that it goes into Harper's and then it would be a centralized entry?
Well, I actually have a call into our rep at Harper's because when I first came on, her and I were going to sit and have a class, if you will, on how to go through the payroll system, but that wound up being with trying to fix some of the problems the day she was here. So I, from what I've been told was there are, Harper's has their own, I guess, time sheets, if you will, that can, certain information is on it, which then in turn gets entered by us. We might go that route. It's just at this point, sitting with our rep and going over that and seeing what works for us.
If your office needs any support from this office to get folks on board with some of the process improvements that you have in mind?
We will be here to ask you.
Please. Because we understand, for Mr. Eaton understands, sometimes it can be like crickets dealing with the department heads, so.
Well, I don't think change is easy for anybody sometimes, especially when you've had a pattern, but it's just, I think it would, it would benefit the town, it would definitely benefit the agencies where money is dispersed to and ultimately benefit the employees to make sure that all their records are accurate.
Yep. Now, yeah, because you're utilizing, because you found out that there's much more than the payroll system can do for you than what it was previously doing too.
Correct. Same like with Vadar, there's just so many levels that you can delve into to better, but with, going off subject for a minute, with trying to just keep the office running on a basic, steady, everyday process, these are all going to be projects, if you will, but all good ones in the end.
And weren't you gonna come, try to come up with the, I know you talked about same kind of payroll sheet that everybody should be using?
I would like to, I know Holly and myself were discussing that, but I do know certain departments have shift differential or other items added or what have you, so it'll, we're gonna sit with Harper's to see if they have a specific for either those types of departments or if there's one that everyone can use, but we just don't fill in that information.
And weren't you also, when I talked to you and Holly, didn't you also say that some of, some departments don't put out actually how many hours a week they're working? And you wanted to see that too on there?
Correct. Some departments have an amount opposed to maybe not the hours and the rate, so it's kind of all over the place, but this is what we're trying, this is one of our goals to try and get it on the same page.
One uniform sheet so everybody sees the same.
Correct.
So, I mean, happy news story is that in the past, when we've had like a transition of treasurers, sometimes the communication with the school has gone awry. I haven't heard of any particular concerns with them in the last like four to six months, but do you feel that you have a good handle on kind of the unique requirements that are currently in both the school union contract and the police union contract and how to execute like against those items?
Yes. Matter of fact, I was on the phone to the school this morning about just discussing certain information I'll need because of the exporting and things like that. They've been wonderful.
I need to actually get with you all both, once we get finalized, because we're trying to get down into the last dregs of the police contract in the next couple of weeks. So once we've got concurrence amongst the board, then I need to sit with you all to talk about the tactical of how to execute some of the stuff that's in there. But like some of the questions that I've sent you offline related to that, but from a standpoint of, and I'm gonna switch gears, I apologize, on the borrowing stuff. I know that we've provided some information about the payment schedules and such. One of the things I'd like to see come from the office, and I don't know your level of comfort with it yet, Lonnie, and I think it's probably an area that you can help with, Keith, and may come as well from our financial advisors, just making sure that we're being smart about both our short-term and long-term notes, because I know some of our smaller loans might seem like they have higher interest because of the fact that they're a much longer term loan. And there may be some opportunity there to reduce our interest costs if we change our structure of those particular notes.
Perfect. Gets back to the leveraging comment that I made earlier. We're not leveraging what we have.
Exactly. So if, you know, that's something I would like to get on both the radar is that from a standpoint of like education to pursue, I think that's an area that has been neglected in the town for many years. And if we can get smarter about how we're leveraging the right things for the right rates at the right... right things for the right rates at the right time, and in conjunction with working at the CIPC around that, I think we'll get a lot of benefit for the town.
What did you mean with the lack of education? Didn't you just say?
No, I said, I said that a focus for her future education might be in the levy area.
I thought you said there was a lack.
I said there was a lack of attention to that area.
I thought you said education.
No, no, I said, I said lack of attention. So, we have not, or in my opinion, based on what I've seen when I was on the advisory committee and since, is that we haven't, because we're so busy in the day-to-day sometimes, and because we didn't have a CIPC stood up, that we didn't have people looking at the strategy that we were using with our borrowing, with how we handle our cash flows, and I think that it's important to just have it on their radar to get some education there, to start talking with the town financial advisor and all of that piece.
Play the same concert with treasurer's office, advisory board, and the capital improvement, so that we're all kind of talking on the same page and that we're all educated to the same level.
Right, right, so, but I kind of look to the treasurer to be the subject matter expert and that information back in the degree, in essence, so.
Might ask a question in that regard.
Certainly.
Part of our capital improvement planning committee, we were talking, in our memo we sent to you, we talked about getting together with the financial Clark Raul, our financial guy, Keith and Lonnie, the accountant. We'd be willing to initiate that process, and the advisory community, we've already talked to them about that, we'd be willing to initiate that, or Keith or Lonnie can, to set up a meeting. We could put an agenda together if you wanted us to do that, or you want to take the lead on getting them?
Whether the treasurer's want to take the lead on it or not.
At this point in time, do you have plans or hope to do another capital project?
Well, what we've done, Keith, at this point, we're generating almost like a wish list of each department of what they want. And if you look at that very preliminary, that wish list looks like over the next five years, about $2 million worth of capital expenditures. The second part of that is where is this funding going to come from? And that includes the town meeting, borrowing, we don't even know what our bond rating is, if we have a bond rating, I don't think we have a bond rating. So, we, in order to us to meet our obligations as select board to get them the capital plan, we need to know the resources, and so we've used Clark Raul in the past.
Yes, pretty sharp guy.
Yeah, so, I mean, in any event, somewhere along the line, we would, that's critical to our commitment to the select board to get them the capital plan, so how that's, the question I guess I ask is, who's going to initiate getting Clark and Keith and Lonnie and all those together to help us out here?
I'd look to you guys, your recommendation.
Your recommendation.
Post committee.
So, am I hearing that you guys will?
I can call Clark.
I'm not sure that, I'd want to bring Clark in until you have somewhat of a plan. Your wish list, so to speak, is formed up just a little.
Oh, yeah, we have, we have a capital plan. And we, there's a couple of departments we haven't got finalized yet, but we have a.
A good working draft, yeah.
Yes, and, so, we can meet with you and Lonnie and go over that with you if you want.
Perhaps we should start there first.
Beg your pardon?
We should start there at first.
Okay.
And then Lonnie and I can communicate with Clark.
Good.
And I know, I'm sure he'd be happy to come over and meet with people, but I just want to make sure we get to a point where it's worth having.
Yeah. He's been very cooperative in the past, so that's excellent.
Came up with a very unusual method of financing the police station. And of course, with interest rates very close to 0%, it's been relatively inexpensive for the town of Brookfield. I'm not sure what's going to happen going forward, because as you know, that's rolled over every year. It's not a bond, it's a bond anticipation though. And so, if the feds keep pushing fed rates up, the other interest rates are going to follow, and towards the end of the project, the interest cost could be much higher. But it was an inexpensive way to borrow the money because you didn't have to go through a bond rating. I think it's been a while since it's been on, had an audit completed, so that's a requirement of getting a bond rating, so there's a number of things that need to be accomplished.
From what I understand from the accountant, she says as soon as, you know, we finish up with the audit that we're having done right now, then Scanlon and Associates will come in and do an audit.
Okay, so that will be for fiscal '16?
Yeah.
'16 or '17?
It'll be '17.
'17.
Seventeen. Okay, how, what?
We'll get that report, I can get it to you today.
Okay.
So, what is your overall, Keith, with Lonnie, how do you think she's doing?
Well, I think she's not afraid to pick up the phone and call someone and get something accomplished or ask questions and. In a particular environment, sometimes you just have to take good people and train them to do what you need to get accomplished.
That's the reality. Just back to this role in the, in central Massachusetts, there's just so few people that are capable to be able to train somebody from the ground up, and again, that's why I suggested earlier with respect to your time and availability of time, to continue this relationship so that you're fully strong in that capability, because, yeah, basically. And again, from my background and another environment, it takes a year to 18 months to get somebody truly trained and capable, and so I respect that. I mean, not afraid of it, but if you're not afraid of the work, then it's, you keep going.
I have to say, every agency that I've reached out to, be it because there were no passwords, or from the ground up essentially, they've all been so helpful, and you can call them all the time, and they're willing to walk you through it, and then even with networking with other town treasurers, I've done that as well, so.
Do you have to say, things, every year they get more complicated, more sophisticated than, compared with 20, 25 years ago, where everything was done by paper and big books.
Yeah, we don't have a green ledger with a cash book anymore, so.
And the green eyeshade.
Right, no green ledger with the cash book.
And the green eyeshade, I think that's the bookkeeper's used to do.
One thing I wish we could do, I know we're limited around here for space, I wish there was something we could give a bigger office for Lonnie, because that was where she is, that was basically a computer room years ago, and one of our treasurer's just decided they were going to run in there because they needed a piece of quiet. So, I just wish there was something we could do to get us some more space. I know we talked about, you know, dividing up the kitchen and things like that.
Could be time.
It could be time, or we could at least potentially get, there are some types of movable filing systems that could potentially fit where we have regular file cabinets that take up about three times as much stuff, so we could at least potentially move like a lot of the files and the books and the stuff out of that space if we can't find an actual space, and just have it be in a more user-friendly and still not have it be far away, but be able to have stuff available at least close by and at least open up some of the space in that room.
Maybe moving Paul's stuff downstairs.
Yeah, that was one thing.
Paul's stuff downstairs, these things over into that corner, I mean, that's probably the most we could do in the near term.
In the near term, yeah, but something like that could at least help, because there's no, I mean, I'm sure Paul would probably be open to helping with that.
Well, I will say, getting back to the goals question, one of the goals is definitely to organize the office, the existing office home. I understand about the whole space and I appreciate that. There are files to go through, I know there's things that can definitely be put in archives and put under a locking key elsewhere, which will help free up more room. And then, being in a very small room, there is a little bit of rearranging that can be done, but the goal is definitely to organize the office itself and the files and the computer system and everything in there, so. It hasn't started, I was able to move my printer yesterday.
Are you, are you comfortable with all of like the, it sounds like one of your big focuses has been payroll so far. Are you comfortable with all of like the deduction stuff, the employee benefits and like how we manage any unemployment, you know, filings, is all of that stuff that's well within your wheelhouse now? Is it stuff you mostly delegate to the assistant treasurer? How's that working?
No, it's pretty much in my wheelhouse. Every day, something new could come in with regards to an employee, so if we haven't done it already, then we look into it and call that agency, and then if there's something that can be actually put on their specific paycheck, or they need a new paycheck, we can call Harper's and they can help us out with that as well. So, there's definitely people to reach out to that you have to anyway, because you can't just do it.
Yep.
And that being said, though, they've all been very helpful and they walk you through everything.
Yeah. How is the turnover process from the other departments, whether it's tax collector or water or highway even? Is the paperwork flow with that working okay? Is it another area where we need to work on?
I think that'll definitely be a little bit of a goal as well, to maybe get a little more streamlined with the turnovers. I mean, right now, I did ask that, you know, nothing be like, you know, an envelope be left with my treasurer with anything in it, and everybody's been wonderful about that.
Do we need to establish a drop box or something, more secure?
I'm not sure yet, this is something that we're still kind of thinking about, because as well as the actual handing in the money, it's also the form that it's handed in on, so I know, I've done some of my own for my turnovers that the accountant mentioned at one time, and she kind of liked those a lot, so maybe we can work together to see if we can come up with one for everybody.
Okay.
Just to make it more streamlined and.
I'm going to jump in, one of the things that the board of selectmen could help us with is the request to have the retirees' health insurance withheld from their pension checks.
We have that, we want to talk about that.
And I did hand in the.
I have talked to Keith about that.
The operation form.
So, we just like the different things to create efficiencies.
Okay, great.
Excellent.
And that way too, it's less, it's not a check mailed here, which has been deposited there, it's just, it's more streamlined, it's less steps, and it's more secure.
Yeah, it'll make it much better, I think even for the retirees, we don't have to put it right now, we have to get paid like the 15th of every month.
Exactly.
It's coming out of the, when it comes out of the check, I think it's much like you said, streamlined the whole thing much better. What else, if we have any other questions, or things that you two would like to bring forward?
We talked about personal development, such as going to classes and VEDAR. I think really that's about it. Oh, procedures for the office. As, well, as I'm learning, whether it's the daily routine or something that happens maybe once a month, or a loan that has to get paid every six months, or what is it? I'm writing procedures down as to how things are done and entered into the computer, coming from, very simply, that, oh, I might get this in the mail, or I might get an email received by, such and such, so these are more procedural opposed to.
Work instructions.
Yes, work instructions, yes. Can you mind pass on a few across, just so?
Well, they're all different ones, but hold on, I got to make sure.
If there's any editorial comments, I won't share them.
No, I'm making sure my password's not on, I know I, I mean, cross off ones, those are deductions. Oh, and then the veteran forms, we're hooked up with that, so the veterinarian and I sat together with Keith to get online with that.
You ought to codify these, so that.
I ought to what?
Codify, again, fancy word.
Yeah, don't use the fancy words, it's too hard.
Okay, so back to, you have a set of process instructions, we have a financial policy document that has what I'll call processes.
Okay.
What you now have are work instructions, and what you want to do is to take these and put them in a form, numbered and that sort of thing, where from time to time, you'll then thumb through them to say that they're current, accurate and complete.
Exactly, and then as things change or whatever, I do add them, and then also binders, depending on which particular item it is, such as like the meal tax, there's a whole process for that as well, and then there's just a binder for it, so it's easy to go to, and it's everything from the daily check op list of how you handle that particular situation is going to be in that binder. Again, it's all part of the organization of the office, and, you know, it's, because I'm writing these procedures down, it's just again, from the bottom up all the way through, but it'll all get there.
Glad to see those, actually. It's good.
I think things are starting to get organized, seems as though things are starting to get organized in the office now, much better than what we had before.
It was a little hectic.
Yes.
Well, you faced a huge challenge.
You did.
Sandy was a good person and worked very, very hard, and sorry for her loss, and you're picking up the ball and running with it, and you're working with folks and getting stuff done.
I'm very happy with it myself, things are going well, and I'm very grateful to Keith for coming out of his retirement and his help, and he's a wealth of knowledge.
He is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would be appropriate way to, because we don't have a great standardized format from the standpoint of doing reviews, so do you want to just do a separate number regarding the topics that we covered?
Do you want to come in now?
Kind of goals and accomplishments?
I got to go home.
I can draft it from my notes.
Do you want to just email?
And we can do it, an approval at the next meeting.
I'd like to bring in, if you're going to need it, should we bring it in?
Or you can just, or you can just. Well, I understand, that's why I was saying, or give me the minutes and I'll take it from the minutes.
Yeah, five or 10 minutes.
Or you go home, bring it to me, and then you can start explaining to me, and I'll go from there.
All right.
Deal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go on to our next one.
Linda, I apologize for not being here, I had it on my list for 10, for 11 o'clock.
I fully accept your.
So, I apologize.
We discussed, we discussed some of the things that you and I had talked about, and then some things that you had discussed with Clarence and with Beth, and so we're pretty well, I don't, we want him to add anything.
Yeah, the only thing I guess is, if we're going to meet our, and thank you for extending the deal, if we're going to meet that, that's subject to us getting certified numbers through the accountant, and that's not her problem, but you know, that's uncontrollable, the other one is we need the select board's capital.
Capital plan.
And so, ideally, could we get a commitment, you guys will have them to us by March 1st?
I think we can do that.
Yeah, okay, sure.
But I almost, I almost think that we're looking at your inventory of what it wants and needs to kind of share.
See how much room is, how much room is left for us, is basically one of the things.
Oh, I mean, how much money you got?
No, we'll never have the money, but the thing is, and again, that you're getting an inventory, you've got some stuff missing from a couple of departments, as I understand.
That's what we talked about the other day.
If you're looking for March 1st, or whatever that is from us, to back up to say, what does that list look like, so that we can, the only thing I have on my brain, huge that's on my brain, is this building, and we just talked about a space for Lonnie, I mean, so that's something that I'd like to see what we could do to carve out that piece.
We have the committee, Commonwealth Improvement Committee, we got their numbers.
Okay.
So, what we're looking from you is, are some things like funding at the Adena site, is there going to be money possibly? Is the Finney property? Is the Finney property, is that, is that a possibility? And again, it's, it's just, it's a, it's a dream list a little bit.
The Finney property, they'll, that's your, we're trying to get the grant for that again with the brownfield.
To understand what we can or have to do.
If it defined it yet.
It's not, and again, back, if I could explain that here and now, I think it'd be important. As far as the Adena project or the campground, we on February 13th will go forward to say what the recommendations are. What I can tell you today is based on your input, we still have three buildings that need to come down. One of them seriously dilapidated and dangerous. So that, that number was $12,000. What we've heard from the archaeologists and whatnot as far as signage and trails and that, that sort of thing is you're looking at another 12 to 15,000 dollars or something in the order of about $25,000, just rough numbers that may be. I wouldn't, I would not at this time, other than, uh, uh, thinking about securing a grant. Because if we go to Mass Historical, we can go to Mass Historical for 50% of the money. If we were to fund, for example, the 12,000 to then take the buildings down and finish that work, that could be matching money for the additional 12,000 for, um, the ar, the archaeologists, the signage and whatnot. But again, I come back to the 13th of February to decide whether or not that's a priority. Further, if we now look at the open space and rec plan, we have a series of meetings from the middle of February to 1st of March. We then are gonna write a grant to them, develop that plan. And so we're not gonna have that in time for town meeting. So it's, it's a year from now that we would have priorities coming.
Next iteration, yeah.
Exactly. And, and what I, what I would look to do, and I, and we spoke earlier about really, we're not taking advantage of external monies. And we need to find a way to capture those external monies. And again, if we have to wait a year on the open space plan to look to the priorities, then we have to wait a year. But we need to think about what other funding sources and your idea of meeting with the accountants or the treasurer and the banks as far as how to borrow and whatnot. I think that's huge.
Now, I'm going to, like I told you the other day, I will speak to them and encourage them to do this with you. Remember we met the other day?
Well, I guess Clarence, I, I hear what you're saying. There's a lot of unknowns.
Yes.
We, we go to each of our departments and, and they say there's some unknowns. They're not sure if they can get grants. But what they do is they'll say, it's almost like worst case scenario.
Best guess, or, or do a best case, worst case actually. We can bound it that way where it's kind of like if we can get external funding, these are all the things we wanna do. If we get external funding, it'll cost us this much. If we get no external funding, it would be this much and provide it to them in that format.
Just like the tearing down of buildings, right? We're spending 9,000 bucks. Well, we could've gotten the money for nothing. I mean, 9,000 bucks may not sound like, but it's nuts.
Cause it's a legal piece to get, to get permission to tear them down.
And, and, and according to the bylaw, we, we submit the capital plan to you. You approve it or disapprove it, but you have, you're, you're supposed to present it at the town meeting. So, you know, and, and we have a comment section. It's, it says, you know, this is what we think, but it could change because we can get a grant or something. So we'll meet that, uh, May 1 deadline, providing you guys give us your, your.
You get ours. You, you get ours. You'll get it.
Yeah, good. Okay.
With a little help from you.
All right. Personally, uh.
Both.
Yeah, okay. Thank, thank you for talking. Again, I apologize for not, you know, missing the meeting.
That's okay. We figured you'd listen.
Thanks, Karen.
Thank you, Karen.
For all you do. Seriously.
Thank you. See ya.
Next on our agenda here is to vote to sign a letter of support for the Congregational Church Grant Application. Maybe I could turn this over to Mr. Snyder.
Certainly, I will put my hat on as the chairperson of the church council. And the church is looking to, uh, to stabilize the, uh, do repairs and the like to the steeple and other external surfaces. Uh, we met with Mass Historical last week and their next funding round needs, uh, an application by March 23rd. The Board of Selectmen has been gracious in the past in our last two submissions to Mass Historical. Successful transmissions, let, let us say, uh, to be able to receive, uh, matching monies to do the external work of, of the church. Maybe I should back up. So that there's this thing that came up about a week ago about, um, division of church and state. Mass Historical has from the very beginning looked to preserve historic sites and buildings. Churches are part of that. The churches were part of the commons of this Commonwealth for a very long time, from the very beginning. And so what, what they're able to do, and there have been lawsuits or, or legal actions taken, and this is confirmed that in fact by the courts, that Mass Historical can fund the external portions of the building. And as you can see, the building continues to be well maintained. Now moving up to the steeple. If you look at the north side of the steeple, you'll see some, some areas where we need to get up there. And the guy with the bosom chair is quoted to go up and do his thing again. And there's some other areas that we'll work on. But I appreciate the board's, uh, support of the, uh, grant submission so that we can see if we can, uh, do some additional work.
I remember when you talked about the steeple. I remember when they first started years ago, uh, doing, living in the church.
They tried.
I remember they, everybody was out watching them take the steeple off the church and they were doing it so.
Or it was gonna fall down.
Always would've fallen down.
Yeah, so the, the good news is that that structure is supported. That was 1998. And, and now it's 20 years and it needs, we need to get up there with, with caulking. And, and last year we were very, or a year ago, we were very successful to get the flanks of the church up to the roof. And now we need to take the steeple from the roof line on up. So that's what, that's what we're planning.
You've done a nice job.
We work it. We work at it. Thank you.
I'm assuming you can't vote on that.
I am going to recuse myself.
Okay, so I'll make the motion to, to support the, or provide a letter of support to the Congregational Church Application. Okay. To sign it, right?
All I have to do is sign it.
Okay, well, I was just gonna make a motion to, to, uh, to go ahead and authorize, uh, the chair to sign that.
I'll second that.
I.
Oh, Karen, this is a purple pen. Could I?
Here's, here's a black one. I think.
Thank you. So I got six weeks to put the proposal together.
Good luck with that.
Oh, yeah.
Do you want your letter?
Thank you very much.
Yeah, very welcome. All right, the next thing.
Oh, oh, maybe back up just 30 seconds. Uh, back to Mass Historical. Uh, this grant round is 24. Uh, it goes through and basically it's a, a year from June that that round finishes and then they start a new round. I would look to the town, especially related to this building, that we can go after monies depending on what we're looking to do at the next round, which would be about this time next year where we can go for 50%.
Next here on our agenda is, um, some more special youth permits for the lakes. This is from facilities. It's called South Pond. It's called the Aluminum Fishing Series.
Why don't we just start with you, Linda? You read them and I'm gonna make a motion to.
Approve all of them to be signed by, by that. Okay, and the other one is in Quaybog Pond. It's the Aluminum Fishing Series. Another one, that's in, that's in July. And then this event is 6/23/18. That's another one on Quaybog Pond. It's called Relight for Life of Tossage. You made the motion. Did you just sign it?
I made that motion.
I'll second.
In last week when they had the fishing derby up on, um, Quaybog, the lines were seen as nice. There weren't any cars out there.
Uh, yeah, would not be safe.
Would not be safe.
That was good.
Other years they have.
Especially when it was warm. That was, that was a good call. So.
But I don't even agree with putting cars out there.
Period.
I'm, I'm a guy from Central Maine.
You don't do that.
We, we, we do it reluctantly. I've seen airplanes go through the ice. I've seen cars go through the ice.
Okay, this is, we have, this is from, this is an appointment and it's from the, um, emergency medical squad for an untold person. And we'd like to, they'd like to appoint, um, Jay Kayla for a term to the Sky and the Dino 2018.
Motion to approve.
I have a second there and I'll favor.
All right.
Jeff has to sign it.
And FYI, what we're doing now is usually typically we use, when we have the appointment slips, we have a copy in our file and we give the other copy to Mike and then he calls the person. Mike asked us that we put the appointment slips directly back to the originator and then it's their responsibility to go see Mike. It just makes it a little easier for him otherwise he's stuck with all these appointment slips and all these phone calls he makes. So that'll go back to the EMT.
Okay, our next thing on the agenda is what Keith was talking about. They, I would discuss that with them the other day. Here, it's the retiree health insurance payments. The list of retail retirement system provides a valuable service to each member entity by withholding retiree health insurance. These amounts are then paid to participating city or town along with report of each participant's amounts with health. This program makes it much easier for retirees as they do not need to remember to admit each month's health and life insurance payment. It makes it easier for the town as only one monthly payment is received. Currently several retirees participate while others continue to send or drop off their payments at various times. We have simple forms each participant may complete a submission to start process. Each time there's a change in the insurance amount, next there's a change on January 1st, the treasurer's office will notify who's supporting retirement and the retiree needs to do nothing. We would like participation to be 100% and request your support.
Motion to, totally. Motion to approve.
My, uh, I'll second it, but I'd like some discussion around it. My only concern is, um, can, is it, is it something we need to check with anyone else within the state? Whether it's fully legal to require it to be?
Many times, many times.
Make it mandatory.
It's the same thing.
So do we need to do a draft, like a policy letter from this board stating that?
No, he needs to write the policy.
Yeah, he wrote it already. He just needs that report and then, yeah, cause I know with the teachers too. Teachers retirement has it automatically taken out too and then they send it here.
I'm just asking because I don't know. So.
Okay, so I'd like, um.
We're supporting it.
We're supporting it.
And we have a second.
We have a second.
Um, favor I. Let's hope Keith can go ahead with it.
Meanwhile, I did get an email back from Mr. Blake regarding the question we sent this morning.
He said he will review the, review the files on the dangerous buildings and give you the exact date when I can get back to the office. I received a voice message from town council.
All right.
Yeah, we got it.
That's all you knew since the first one. Yeah.
That's all you wouldn't know. Okay. He did.
Can I bring up a couple of minor, very minor things under other?
Yeah, cause I have a minor thing.
I have one too.
Okay.
I'm gonna run to the rest.
Oh, sorry. Do you wanna do that first or you wanna?
You got, you got a bunch of stuff.
Just, no, it's not a bunch of stuff. It's, let's, let's do it.
A jury?
Yeah, just do a.
Quick room.
Quick break.
All right, be right back.
My things are very brief. You're gonna, you're gonna make a vote and call a meeting to order again.
We'll call a meeting to order again at 11:50.
Just a couple of quick questions. We have the new website up. I've had a, a brief discussion with Karen about the fact that, um, really no, um, ongoing support of posting stuff is included in that contract. They just set it up and it's written in something called J. Paul, which makes it relatively easy for users to access. I'm still working through some access issues of my own, both to the email and to the website. Uh, Tom George has been great in assisting with that. But, um, a couple of different things. One is that Tom really only bills us once a year, but he's probably put a lot more hours than what he billed us for previously. If we have the budget, I'd, I'd like to, uh, support the fact to just communicate with him and see if he can come up with an appropriate, um, fee for all of the support he's given us so far. But, uh, in the absence of, like, not all of our department heads are, are comfortable with doing the updates themselves. I wanna go through the training to find out how hard it is. And then the, the, uh, building inspector, um, did provide me a couple of things that he's willing to allow to be posted under his section. It might make it, uh, they're educational and it might make it more useful to people who have questions so that it, they can get prepared to come talk to him the times when he's available in his office hours. So with your permission, once I go through the training, I know it's typically would be his job, but I'd like, uh, your permission to go ahead and post the stuff that he's authorized to post.
And you, you have, now you have, fully have his permission to do it?
Absolutely. He physically handed me these two things and said, you can provide these two things to townspeople in advance so that before they talk to me that they have this information. So. So, and he was actually, um, pretty open to that piece of it. Um, and then the other thing is, is just a quick follow-up. Can we send some sort of formal communication to the Board of Health that even though they felt that they had dealt with the quarantine question appropriately, that there isn't a lot of information on the website about, um, things like if, if, if there's a dog bite incident that, that, that the animals ought to be quarantined or what the, what their process is of getting notified by the dog officer and that they at least send us a courtesy notice of any, uh, notices that they send out to the townspeople about quarantine if there's an incident in the future so that we're at least aware of it? Just a communication between us and them.
Well, they, we're actually in charge of the animal control and they're the dog officer and the Board of Health is in charge of the animal inspector.
Right. And I'm just asking that we send them a communication that we'd like to enhance the communication on those interrelated topics that are separate, but sometimes for the same incident might require action of both offices to just coordinate our efforts. And if the animal control officer responds to something, that she just send them a courtesy notice. And then when they receive it, that they acknowledge receipt and that if they send out a quarantine notice, that they at least copy Karen. And that way our office is aware of it.
I don't think the quarantino comes from the animal control. It doesn't.
No, it comes from the animal agent. I'm saying that the Board of Health notify, that our person, the ACO, notify them if there's an issue, which we already do. But what we don't have is a courtesy notification from the Board of Health back to either animal control directly or through this office to say, hey, we received your communication that this incident happened. We have taken the following action, i.e. sent a notice to the owners that the, that the, that the animals need to be quarantined so that we've at least closed the loop on that whole process. Because, because we each own a different portion of the response, I'm just trying to see if we can ask them for more communication.
Well, I know, I know if there is also, if there is an animal, if there's been, an animal has been bitten or something themselves and they got, undergo rabies, I know that the, um, uh, the veterinary clinic will send notifications to the Board of Health.
Okay, again, my, my, my interest is that we at least get a courtesy notification from Board of Health about those sort of things.
Well, it's something, you know, we can talk to them about.
Yeah. Do you want me to request that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What, what I'm thinking is that there, there's a process and it's not anywhere. So if, if we could have their input, if we could put our input and have Sarah put, provide guidance to us.
Quarantino for any, any?
Animal issues.
All the animal issues, yeah.
Yeah, general guidelines.
Yeah, just some general guidelines so that it's in writing somewhere and everybody knows what the policy is. Cause to your point before, not everybody has 40 years of background and experience of knowing how that process works. And for new people, it would be nice to have it in writing somewhere. So you want all animal issues, general guidance to the Board of Selectmen on the process? And then you also want them to CC us with any, um, with any intervention that they do, if they have any complaints? Is that what you're asking? I'm not clear on that.
Uh, we, we would be that, should there be, uh, notification issues that the Board of Selectmen has copied?
And another thing, what they could probably even do, the Board of Health could even put something on their website. Or even the animal control officer would put something on hers to what the process is.
Just so it's, just so there's more transparency for people in town. It might not have the experience and the background and know how it's supposed to go.
Right.
George, can I?
Just real quick, remember, this is the 300th year of the first town meeting in the town of Brookfield. And so what I would like to have you think about, and now that snow was, was gonna come off the ground. Uh, we do have a replica that was sitting in front of the church as a meeting house, uh, the original meeting house. And I'm, uh, wondering whether or not we would like to put it someplace in prominence within the town as we advertise town meeting and the 300th. So just, uh, have you thinking about it. Not something we have to decide today, but just think about where we, where we wanna want. It's, it's in Mike's, uh, storage area so we can move it to wherever. And we could put a little sign on it to explain the historical interest. It's just a matter of where the best place would be to put it.
Okay. That is, that's a nice idea. Okay, what mine is about, um, they're having, uh, it seems as though it was a heating problem. Okay, what mine is about, they're having, it seems as though it was a heating problem. The assessor and the tax collector have both doors open all the time in their offices, and I have come in, and it's been cold in the offices, and I come in and I shut the door, and they claim they need just a communication to have the doors open, but the doors have always been closed in the winter, and it seems as though the furnace, the new furnace in the hallways come in and heating the offices because the furnace, the heat doesn't even come on in the main office. And Mike has spoken to Al about this quite a bit, and he shut the door and he opens it right back up again, and then no heat gets down here for Lonnie at all. So I told him, I said, I believe the door should be shut, they shouldn't have it in the winter, the door shouldn't be open because you're running, looks happening as the new furnace is heating all those office spaces, and I don't think that's what it was meant for. Well, I mean, they have communication with one another, I mean, they should be, go from one's office, you just, in the dead of winter, you shouldn't have all these office doors wide open.
Well, so it's actually, although that's a behavioral issue to me, and I know that we have a different issue with the heating, in that we did have the pipes start to freeze up on, because we don't have good balance between the two systems. My thought is, do we have, and I, shame on me, I haven't gone through the variance report that Carrie sent out last week, but do we have any funds available that we could bring somebody in to balance the two systems? Because it seems like what we may want to do, because this new furnace is so much more efficient, is find out what it would cost to pipe some of its output a couple of different places, one being where we're seeing the freezing pipes, and the other one being, actually bring some of the heat for that into this zone, or figure out... I have my own zone, but the problem is it doesn't, Lonnie has, no, her, Lonnie's only source of heat comes from the large room, so if, from the big office, so if their heat's off, then she is... Well, I think one of the, I think...
But the purpose, for many years, all the years I was here, we always kept those doors shut, and the main door, you would come into like the town court office, we always had a sign there, you know, please come inside door. But I mean, to me, they're defeating the whole purpose of having a new furnace out there, because the furnace wasn't put in to heat the whole office spaces, like heat Al's and heat the main office. And I have shut it many a times, and they open it right back up again.
Well, if you just moved the thermostat in with Lonnie's office, because then her temperature would control, would control whether the heat comes on or not.
Taking me back, I'm not sure, so what we have is, we have the old furnace that is heating this square, basically, here to the main office. We have a new furnace that was to heat the hallway and the accountant and, and...
Building inspector.
Building inspector and Al's office, and just, so, so those ought to be sequestered that way, and this ought to be sequestered this way. So now, where's the door getting open?
The side door, it's right in between the tax collector and the assessor. They're just leaving that door wide open all the time, and Mike has asked them too before to shut the door, and he's starting a little squabble with them, and I mean, the door has to be shut.
So what we have is, we have a heating system here that wants to be segregated from there, so doors need to be maintained to, essentially bound, we, again, if it were cheaper to use the new furnace, I'd use the new furnace, but...
Well, I guess my question is, I'd like to find out if, is it?
So do we have any expert on, on the heating system? We really don't, do we?
No, but I mean, the purpose is, I think it's defeating the whole purpose, because it wasn't meant to be put in to heat all those offices.
No, I agree with, I totally agree with that. Where I was headed with the conversation was that, given that the new furnace is as efficient as it is, and we have the old furnace and it's not as efficient, that does it make some sense to look at it, not change anything, to the best point of piping stuff, whatever.
No, I'm just saying, have somebody look at it to see if the balancing...
For now, the balancing is, you sequester the two, and you keep the doors closed.
Yeah.
Right? So that's, that's our instruction.
Step one.
So step two is, and if you give me permission, what I'd do is I'd turn to Bill Simpson, and I'd say, hey, Bill, you have, you work with the heating guys, would you look at if there's a more efficient way to heat the existing areas?
Because we have to, we have to do that anyway because of that freezing issue that we had in the bathroom.
Right.
Okay, so we need to get somebody in, and I guess what my point is, and to your point, the first thing is...
What freezing issue?
So he had copied the whole Board of Selectmen back in December. Well, he said, no, he never said it froze, he said it, he thought it was going to freeze. Right, well, it was very, it was very close to freezing.
But that's totally different than this subject I'm talking about, because right as of today, I asked Karen to turn the heat up to warm, because I said it was cold in here, and the door is open, wide open, and you're still not, the cold air is still coming in.
But that's here, here doesn't really have anything to do with that.
No, I understand that, Karen, but it didn't even, would you put the heat up, it didn't do anything in here, because you got the cold air coming from out there.
Oh, all right, got it, okay.
So doors are closed to maintain the security of the two systems.
Right.
Second, I will ask Bill Simpson to take a look to determine whether or not there's some balancing that we could do, or other improvements related to the heating system.
Yeah.
All right?
And maybe Karen could send a memo out saying that we want the side door closed.
Oh, just, is there a sign still on it? I'm trying to think.
I don't know if it is.
We'll put a sign up.
But if they need communication with one another, you just go from room to room, you don't have to...
Can I have permission to just chat?
You don't have to holler back and forth.
Can I have permission to just chat a little?
I have talked to the best.
Yeah, let's leave it.
But that's the way it is, we're just going to take them, we're going to send a memo and say that we want that door shut.
And we're going to work with Bill to see if there's some other improvements.
I think it's nice to have that in the communication, that way they know at least that there's some...
We're just not making a mandate.
Yep, exactly.
If there's a better way, let's find out.
But I mean, I can't see the people in these other offices getting cold, and they shouldn't have to be bringing electric heaters to warm the place, because we're using more electricity, more electricity, yeah.
All right.
Okay, is there any other thing on our agenda here?
Go.
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, Sharon, I'm sorry, Sharon. You want to come take a seat?
Yes.
Okay.
I'd just like to address some comments that were made earlier by former Cable Access Chair James Sniffin. I won't go over the minutes thing, because I think that's been thoroughly discussed, and I appreciate the board's support for the work we've been doing all along, and their understanding of the constraints we're under, especially since James quit on us without notice back in February, leaving a, what should have been a seven-person board, and was down to four, to three people doing all of the work. But he made a comment in the form of a guess that because we had not been holding meetings, that we were somehow in violation of the open meeting law. I just want to go on the record as to say that we do our meetings by the book, we have meetings when we have to set policy, we have meetings when we have to make funding decisions, or when we're requesting something from the larger town, for example, the Board of Selectmen. We do not need meetings to schedule video shoots. That is taken care of with the programming list that I have been submitting to every meeting for the past five years, which James is well aware of, and which he has possession of copies. You do not need to have a formal board meeting to ask somebody to cover a meeting. The open meeting law says nothing about that, it's not even implied. So to state that because we've not been having meetings, that somehow we're holding rump meetings, clandestine meetings, behind the, behind people's back meetings, I just want to set the record straight, that is not happening, it has never happened, and when we need to do town business, we do hold meetings. The reason meetings have not been held in five months is because, number one, nothing that I've described has come up that necessitates a meeting, number two, we have not had the time, because three of us are doing all the work. A fact of which Mr. Sniffin is well aware, because one of the reasons he stated for quitting was because he felt he wasn't getting the support that he deserved. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, I would like to make a motion to adjourn at 12:05.
12:03.
12:05.
All right, I'll second that motion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we're out of here.